City Council Work Session to Order being Tuesday, December 6th here of our Lord 2022 being 3:02 PM on the case of the mayor, he was just late. And so invocation with you to the council and the public.
Pray with me, please. The most gracious God and Father, we thank you for being here with us today. We pray that you will speak to our hearts that we do the business for the city. We pray for the presentations that will be made here, Lord, that you get the glory in Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, council members, city staff. I'm so pleased to come to you today with the Public Art Advisory Committee's update for September 6th, 2022. We've had a lot of things happen and have got a couple of really exciting announcements as well. I'd like to be the first to do it. How many of you have been to CD Fire Station Number 9? It is absolutely gorgeous. Keely and Michael Shields did a fantastic job installing that in 48 hours, by the way. They drove in on Monday evening and by Wednesday night they were on their way back to Colorado. The fire chief and the staff were very impressed with this as well. So I'm pleased to say that the Public Art Program and Fire Station Number 9 is now complete. We're moving on to OPD Training Facility. That sculpture is also complete and we are just waiting for the foundation to cure for the next 21 days. So the install for that piece will be in October, in about six weeks. Also, very happy to get that piece completed. And then over to Fire Station Number 6. Now that we've got one fire station done, we can move on to Fire Station Number 6. Brian Stanton, the artist, is almost complete with the stained glass piece. And I don't know if I had mentioned this before, but Bryant is a native of Andrews, Texas. So this is a very important piece for him to be able to give back to his community. His stained glass studio is in Waco now. And if you're ever traveling in that direction for business, stop by and see it because he does amazing work for the city of Waco and we get one of his pieces right here. Animal Control is also under construction. That's on target to be installed by the end of December 1st of January. We've had monthly conversations with DeVary and Associates. And I think this is going to be a really great piece to encourage people to go to the new facility and adopt. And that's what we want. We want to create a sense of joy and opportunity in this animal control facility. The Lee Street mural, which is on the side of the Family Wellness Clinic, will also be installed in the next two weeks. Greg Gosell will be traveling down here and working with some Odessa College art students as apprentices and will have this installed by the 24th of September. He'll be working all day, every day, and it's so close to City Hall that I hope if you've got an opportunity, could come down and actually watch him work. Literally, you can watch paint dry.
Just a mural that's kind of redundant?
Yes, sir.
What happened to the long one?
He died.
I know, that's what you look like after a token when you leave the bar shit called Oklahoma.
And I think that's a great writer.
You don't even get that far, you die first at Alabama.
That was last year, we're not there yet. Right now it's still 0-0, so it's football season.
Yeah.
Don't bless my bubble, Saturday isn't coming yet.
Here's Ross. You're the first to see this piece besides the selection committee. We still have a couple of design elements to finesse. But this is the lone finalist for the Floyd Gwynn art piece. Randy Walker is the artist and the selection committee, as well as the Public Art Advisory Committee, have chosen this design for its colorful nature and also for the throwback to the fact that Floyd Gwynn used to be an airport. So we're looking at the history of Echo County and letting that inform the future of the Floyd Gwynn art piece. So I'll be back for approval to this, but we were so excited by what we saw. We just wanted to go ahead and give you a little sneak peek. But most importantly, I wanted to share with you today that the Bright Star Memorial, which honors the memory of the victims of the August 31st shooting, is complete and it is here. The photo you see there is from the inspection that we did in mid-July. It took all day and it was really emotional. So I can only imagine what it's going to look like when it's installed. But we checked the spelling on everything. We checked to make sure every victim's name was there. We checked with family members. This is the most significant piece of art I have ever worked on. And I am very bittersweet, but very proud of the fact that we have this to honor the memory of those that were lost and wounded. And so our part is done. This piece is fully funded. It's here. We have inspected it, we've accepted the artwork, and now the ball is in UTPB's court. And they're going to, they've already started clearing land and will be able to have this installed by next August 31st. That's a bird's eye view of the site. What you're seeing on the far right-hand side of the image is Loop 338. You see an entrance where the old driving range was. And then this is about 200 meters inside the walking trail. When it rains, the drainage ditches around it will make the site look like an island. It will have three entrances and be accessible with purpose. One of the things that was very important to us, knowing that people are still dealing with the effects of this event, is to not have anyone accidentally see it. You need to make a choice to go and you need to have time to mentally and emotionally prepare. And the last thing we wanted to do with a piece this significant was to re-traumatize anyone. So you'll be able to see it, you'll be able to access it, but it's not going to be on a street corner where you can just drive by and accidentally see it and have, you know, re-traumatization because that's not what this is about. This is about helping to heal, to grieve, and to honor those that we lost. This is a better rendering of what it's going to look like when it's finished. You can see there are four entrances, including one that is accessible without using the stairways so that we make sure everyone who wants to go can go. I'm really proud of the partnership that we have with UTPB on this project. In their entire campus transformation plan, this is their highest priority. And this is where they're focusing their time, energy, and finances to get it ready for next August 31st. I'm pausing here because if you have any questions, this would be, I'm happy to answer anything about the Bright Star Memorial. Also, I just want to say that UTPB did a great job with the anniversary event this last August 31st.
Counsel, any questions?
Okay, time for some announcements. I'm really excited. We have Mural Fest coming up, May 13th, 2023. It's the first time we'll have any type of activity of this nature here in Odessa. We're partnering with Downtown Odessa, with Discover Odessa, and our plan is to put five murals on Fifth Street in a week. And the last day, instead of watching paint dry, we'll have vendors and local artists and musicians at theater and dance. We have some art groups from Austin coming in. It's going to be a whole day's worth of exciting adventure. At the end of which, we will still have five murals that will beautify Downtown Odessa. So our festival will have a tangible lead behind. And if it's successful and we do this every year, we'll be five murals every year. Think how many you're going to have in the city of Odessa in 10 years. That's exciting. And because of that and because of the work we've just seen. The nonprofit management center of West Texas has awarded a 2022 Beacon Award to the Odessa Public Art Program. We're being recognized by all of the nonprofits in the West Texas area for the achievements in our public art program, which means people are taking notice not just in Odessa, but outside across West Texas and across the country. We've been approached by an Amazon TV series called The Story of Art in America. They are preparing to shoot their third season. The first season, they took eight episodes and centered on eight cities across the United States, focusing on their public art program and their local artists and produced eight half-hour episodes. That first season was just released in June of this year and they are filming season two and looking for cities for season three. Season three is based in Texas. Every single city that they're looking at in Texas will be in Texas. Again, we're looking at seven cities. It will be filmed in May 2023, which is when our Mural Fest is going on. And the seven cities are Amarillo, Texas, Fort Worth, Dallas, Austin, Houston, McAllen, and Odessa, Texas. So I'm very proud of this. It shows how effective our public art program is. It shows the attention it is getting nationwide. It shows the attention it's getting in our own city. And we will have something to show the entire world and our community about our community's investment in art. So I'm very, very proud of that. I wanted to leave on that note and also congratulate the council and the entire community for making this happen because it's not a one main job, it's not a one organization job, it's everybody's job. So I'm very proud of this and happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, any questions?
Don't have a question, but I do have a comment. Thank you so very much for all of your hard work. I think it's all so exciting and I'm excited for the spring. It's going to be great.
Any other questions? Any further interrogation, anything?
And anything else you'd like to add? Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much for a great presentation. Can we go to item two, Atmos Update? Atmos Energy? Uh oh, we're about to, we're about to rain trucks. There's the one more. Sorry, I missed it.
Oh, too bad.
Such short lived.
Okay. First of all, thank y'all for allowing us the opportunity to come before you this afternoon. It's been a few years since Atmos Energy has given operations report. So I really appreciate Michael giving us some time and for all allowing us to be here. To those of you who have not had the opportunity to now, Andrea gets an answer about here in the Permian Basin region supporting our public art team. Christina Davis is our operations manager here in Permian Basin. Ms. Brandy Price is, some of y'all may know she was down here previously. She is now our leadership and support in Lubbock. And Ms. Kelly Grimes will hopefully be here in a minute and supports our supports and leads from our Lubbock office, which is the headquarters for our West Texas division. So Atmos Energy has eight divisions that serve six states in the United States. We are the largest natural gas-only distributor in the United States. We're very proud that we try to do that as safely as possible. Our corporate headquarters are in Dallas and they provide support for all of our divisions. In West Texas alone, we serve about 80 communities. That's more than 326,000 customers. We are very proud of the work that we do here in the Permian Basin. We've invested more than $130 million to modernize our natural gas system and that includes infrastructure right here in Odessa. And more than 80% of those capital expenses are located or allocated to safety and reliability, which includes modernization projects for our Permian Basin. I guess I'm next to get to see you guys. I'm sorry for the last minute walk-in, but thanks for the time for us today. We are spending quite a bit of time on talking about things that I'm sure you guys are as well. And some of that is our environment, the climate and other things that are kind of the buzzwords these days. And so our investment in our system, as Andrea was saying, does include leak detection equipment. You guys may have seen overnight at some point that we do run a cars. They are, we call them ANLD, which is automated mobile leak detection. They run and these cars are very valuable in our leak detection on our system. Where typical sensors and things like that usually measure in parts per million. This car measures in parts per billion. And so we can find even very tiny pinhole-type leaks that are on our system or something that just needs to be tightened, those kinds of things often show up in that. So that's one of the ways that we are really trying to be more efficient in what we do and environmentally friendly. We have set a goal by 2035 to reduce methane emissions in our system and in the communities that we serve by 50%. We are well on our way to that. We have, in the previous years from 2000 to 2022, we have already reduced our methane emissions by 50%. Our strategy does support a low-carbon future. In everything that we're doing, we are thinking about modernization of our system, our reducing third-party damage, improving and measuring methane emissions with ANLD and other techniques that we have, evaluating and implementing a lot of technologies that we have. We're looking at things internally and externally and then that our techs actually have on them day to day just to really have the top-of-the-line equipment to be able to find and respond to in emergency climate out there. And then really expanding our programs to help customers. We are working on a rebate program that is before the ROR commission right now. They are looking at that and hopefully we will be able to roll that out by the end of this calendar year. So that's one of the things that we're working with our customers. There'll be several other things that I think Andrea will go over that we do with our customers. But really, in all that we're doing, in all that we're reporting, we are looking to be clean, efficient, affordable, and really just environmentally friendly overall. This is a neat project. This is one of the very first. This is the first project that's had in Lubbock. Lubbock being our division headquarters. We have partnered with Habitat for Humanity to build three zero-nat energy homes in Lubbock for their folks. The blitz actually kicked off yesterday. The start of the project was yesterday. Over the next 12 days, Atmos has partnered with Habitat to build completely three homes. A zero-nat energy home, for those of you that, it may be a new term to you, really means that the home is going to produce as much energy as it consumes within one year. When you're thinking about affordable housing and when you're thinking about folks that are going into these Habitat homes and others that really are tight on the budget, affordable housing really does start with affordable energy. You can get someone into a home, you know, Habitat home for, you know, a lower cost than you would on the market. But if their utility costs are expensive, it's hard to keep them in those homes. And so these homes, on average, we have a few that are finished. We have two in Colorado that are complete and one that in Dallas that is complete. When we finished the first one of these proof of concepts in Colorado two years ago, on average, their entire energy cost was about $50 per month. So it's significant savings on that. In building these homes, we are incorporating natural gas, of course, electric, solar technology, and then very high-efficiency appliances, including tankless water heaters, all of the range, the refrigerator, all of those things being Energy Star rated. And then doing indoor air quality tests and really just making sure that these, all the loops of these homes are very, very tight. They will stay very warm in the winter and very cold in the summertime. And then those energy costs will remain really low for these families. If you haven't seen that, or if you're not familiar with that, I would highly encourage you to go out and take a look at zero-nat energy and the benefits that it provides to homeowners. And really, it is sort of the path of future homeownership, according to builders and developers and others that are taking a look at that soon. Something definitely good to get educated about. So in addition, in addition to being environmentally conscious, Atmos strives to be a good community partner. Through Atmos' Fueling Safe and Thriving Communities Initiative in Odessa, along with the past year, we gave out just over $19,000 for charitable giving. But we also encourage our employees to donate their time as well. Some of the highlights that we have, we've done here in Odessa, one that I'm particularly proud of is the Odessa College pantry garden. If you've ever been on their campus and seen that, it's been widely accepted by the students. They are getting fresh vegetables and herbs from that garden. And they do a great job of teaching them how to use that and how to cook with the stuff they have available. And it's leading it to a healthier lifestyle. We also partner with the Veterans Parks Foundation for the replacement of trees at County Park. We have a great relationship with people that are so beautiful. We have an adopted spot that we clean up twice a year and the White Angels sponsor for them as well. Something else that we do here, well, throughout the enterprise, but is we have a shared program. So as a customer, you can donate money back to Atmos Energy and that money goes towards customers who may need some financial assistance. And we also receive federal dollars for the light heat funding. So that money goes back to customers and me. Our biggest partner here in Odessa is West Texas Opportunities. They work with the client to identify their needs, if they qualify, and help in getting that money. All right, looks like Kelly's not there, so we're here. So it's probably the one slide I'm not familiar with. So forgive me, I'm actually going to read some notes on this one. Because of the work we do throughout the year maintaining and monitoring our system, we're ready to deliver natural gas to our customers when there is an increased need for heat during the winter months. And I'm sure everyone saw that the last couple of years, we had some pretty intense storms. We worked day and night to make sure that we were able to take care of everybody and prioritize, you know, if we did need a full, who that was and make sure we kept the community up and running. Did you know that natural gas is a fuel of choice for 5.2 million Texas homes and businesses? In 2021, Texas passed legislation that preserves energy options for all consumers, which allows homeowners, businesses, and industry, they continue to free them to choose energy that best needs and uses resources. This helps to ensure that communities have access to abundant, reliable, and affordable energy to drive economic growth and keep families safe and thriving. Having affordable energy is important to providing affordable housing. In Texas, 27% of households qualify for receiving financial assistance in their health. Kind of what Andrea, who's over there now, mentioned earlier, actually, you're going to be. And almost 30,000 Atmos Energy customers received this financial system in the past year. So I know we were going to talk a little bit earlier about our leak detection. Like Brandy mentioned, we are always trying to find ways to make sure we are in the leading and the top of any industry that's out there. And so this right here, if you look at, when you're guys is green, that is one of our APB slash recording, especially I have two brands we use, kind of like Brandy mentioned, that works on parts per billion. I mean, that is how focused we are in trying to make sure that any issues that we have in the system that were out there, we were making sure that we were capturing them. So with this, we also use our traditional survey. This unit actually runs at night. You guys may have received calls and may have seen on Facebook. I tend to guard those in the alleys, sometimes that kind of freak people out. We tend to get everybody to heads up when that's happening. And a lot of people actually think it's a Google car. So if you think you're seeing a Google car driving out night, it's probably just us seeing the survey. Again, that's just us focusing on our leaks, trying to make sure that we have the safest facilities out there. We also, in hand with this, we do traditional survey, which we do during the day. You might see those guys, those are kind of the boots on the ground. They'll have a wand going over our units. We also have our trucks that have a mountainous front. So again, this is just our focus, to make sure that we have one of the safest facilities out there. So along with that, with leak detection, we also have monitoring in different grade classes. I'm all based on that. So once we do our surveys, we will go out there and we look back to see what kind of leaks take out. So there's different, multiple leaks that we see here. So a leak is found and it's graded based off the state of that your federal regulation. So this is all going off what's currently regulated. So we find a grade one leak, it is immediately repaired. Doesn't matter the time of the day, if we determine it's a grade one or a cut line obviously falls into that grade one. We are out there day or night, making sure that that's taken care of and secured, no matter how much time it takes. Let's see. Grade two and three are categorized as non-hazardous and are scheduled to repair based on those guidelines I mentioned earlier. So as mentioned before, we heavily rely on the public to call when they smell natural gas. So anytime we're in the community, we try to make sure that we educate the importance. If you smell it, give us a call, even if you're not sure if it's natural gas, go ahead and give us a call. I know a lot of times, natural gas, super can smell kind of similar. We don't care if the public's not sure. We want them to call us and we'll determine that and just make sure that they're safe. So damage prevention is another item that is extremely important to us, especially calling 811. 811 is a free service that's out there that will locate any utilities that is in an excavation site. And it is also required by law, regardless of who you are that's testing it. If you are a contractor, a homeowner, the city, Atmos, we all call 811. Sorry, I'm going to regret. We all call 811 just to make sure that we are taking care of our facilities. Sorry. So along with that, it doesn't matter the size of the project. It doesn't matter if it's a city project that has multiple street slums or black slums or if it's just somebody planting a tree. It is very, very important to make sure that we call 811 because there could be utilities in that yard that someone's not aware of, but we just want to make sure we don't hit it. That makes sure that all of our facilities stay safe. So it's required we to make sure that our facilities is safe. That keeps our internet working, which especially nowadays with still working kind of remote, some of those things. Internet has become extremely important to a lot of people. Also make sure that our water is flowing and our electric or gas stays on. You know, and more than anything, it makes sure that we're safe, that everyone stays safe. The community, those excavators, and the homeowners. And with that, you know, last year talking about some of the grade ones that we had. In Texas, 60% of our grade ones that we talked about were actually the calls of third-party excavators. So again, it's just really, really important to make sure that we get that message out there. We make sure everybody calls and make sure that we can locate those utilities. We could possibly prevent half of those damages if they were called 811 and make sure that they worked correctly on their utilities. Going with 811, if you're ready to get them up. Gus the Gopher, Gus the Gopher is our annual gas ambassador. Whenever we get a chance to speak to the public or does anybody kind of show that awareness for 811, Gus the Gopher is one of those items that helps us. So really glad that we were able to give you guys one of those, along with Rosie, who helps to remind the public, the importance of calling in if you smell natural gas. Hi, that was like, you are bees. Actually, this is one of my favorite ones. We work really, really hard to work on our infrastructure and again, going to make sure that we're one of the safest providers in natural gas. We make a lot of efforts to identify areas that are higher risk and make sure that we are repairing them. So every year we go through, and on this map, it's kind of hard to tell it. If you kind of look towards the top with color code, those are projects we've done in the past and they're down the bottom, I guess would be kind of a orangeish brown color. Those are the projects that are scheduled for next year. So we're doing five projects, larger projects, which will be split into smaller phases for this next fiscal year. So we're doing something kind of different where, again, those are larger areas.
Is it your rehab program?
I'm sorry?
Is it your rehab program that you're doing?
Yes, yes, our hyreplacement project, sorry, hyreplacement project. So yes, this is something we focus on every year. So this next year, we're looking at doing around 98,000 feet, which will include 1,357 customers. Again, those are all aging infrastructures that we're going to be replacing and sure that we have to qualify them to ground. And along with that, kind of looking at the map. So I mentioned these are the larger areas. So something that we're doing a little bit different is that we're actually phasing these into much smaller projects. So we'll see less multiple streets that'll be under construction. We'll see those projects rapidly a little bit quicker. So that'll be less inconvenience to, you know, the community and homeowners and all those affected by those projects. And last year, we did a great job of partnering with the city to review those areas, make sure we're meeting timelines, we're clearing any conflicts that may happen after the projects. We look forward to doing this next year. So are there any questions, comments, concerns?
What have you all done to keep your gas distribution up in case we had another storm like we did two years ago? It's a natural question.
So I can go with it.
You upgraded your, weatherized your equipment?
Yep, so it wasn't listed on that map because it falls into a different category, but we do system improvement projects, so we actually have a couple we're working on right now. I know there's a few different names we're putting, Homestead Area, it's a growing area. We're bringing an additional line, Pizza Area, same thing with North Odessa. We've done a handful of projects over the last couple of years and future, you know, plenty of growth that's to make sure that we can maintain those systems, to make sure everybody has gas.
So the thing is, are we doing a weatherization program or winterization? Do we know? I remember seeing that call.
Right.
And we're at repairs. He sat there, I'm like, okay, how do we do it? My fear is having a system go down, turning it off is one thing, turning it back on, a whole different setup. And the thing is, is that going through the rehab, one of the things that you should find out is that we've had a lot of homes, you're talking about aging infrastructure, so are the homes. The thing is, is that bringing up that system too fast, you might have systems in there that are old, that are pitted, would have been very disastrous. Thing is, is that how do we work together to be able to come up with? Thing is, is that how do we work together to be able to come up with it? Because, you know, we have to prepare for that weather, that one percent every year. You know, is there any resource where we can get together and talk about that with our spec?
I will say, we generally try to do winter prep meetings typically in mid-September to late September before the cold weather actually sets in, to talk to you guys about what are your plans, who are the right folks that we would contact. We have our folks in the room to make sure that you guys know if you have an issue, or if you hear something, you have a cell phone number that's available twenty-four hours for our folks, so the right person can respond. In those winter prep meetings, we like to bring up any concerns that we have, or, you know, thoughts about the coming winter season, and then we give you guys the opportunities to do that, too. So we typically do schedule winter prep meetings. We do that with the school districts, we do that with our cities, you know, we like to do that with any of kind of our larger gas users, or that have larger customer groups, of course. And so we do those winter prep meetings every September, just preparing for winter. We also have internally some things that we do where we go out and, you know, we have some systems that only turn on in the wintertime, you know, to provide extra support for those systems. We go out and we do maintenance, and we look and we check, and, you know, we make sure that that's good to go for the winter. We also have some additional storage that we've opened up. You're asking, you know, kind of how we prepared. We've been able to secure some initial take points, so if what happened during winter storm period were going to happen again, we have some additional folks that we have contracts in place for, and take points where we're able to take additional gas.
That's all, that's all okay, but when your compressors freeze up, it doesn't do you any good if you can't move it. So that was my question.
You're right. And that's really beyond us. I mean, once we take it from the midstream, you know, it comes, and once we have the take point, and we take over from there. But I do know that the Robert Commission has been very focused on that. The weatherization rule has gotten into place, and there are very, very strict penalties for those that don't follow that. And there's also going to be very frequent calls with kind of all of the natural gas and all of the utilities in that throughout the winter, just to make sure that we don't see a repeat of that. But from our standpoint, once we have the take point there, we can take it if the gas is available. We also have increased our storage capabilities, so that if we, if we are not getting the gas that's expected that we have ordered, then we have the ability to pull that out of storage, and be able to put that on the line.
So it's the midstream supplier that's got the, the ownership's on them to keep their compressor winterized?
Yes, sir. We do not operate in that area. We take from the midstream.
I didn't know if y'all had your own compressors or third-party vendor, but it makes, it makes perfect sense.
Yes, we're the grocery store. Once they deliver the grocery, we sell it.
You're in the same boat with us.
Yes.
Yeah, we're at, we're at the mercy of the enemy. Do you have any idea which plan that they wind up adopting with the twenty seventeen, twenty twenty? I didn't go back to the air cuts, and that's what we talked about.
I believe it was a hybrid. There's two. I think they made a few changes for both of those, and ended up adopting kind of a hybrid and all of the different, the things that they felt like would be most efficient.
Okay. Council, any other questions?
Granny, back to the mayor's initial question, in terms of the customer, say the residential customer, when you're working in those lines and you've replaced the new lines with a polyline, oftentimes the line going to the home is where we would often see problems. Does Amos have programs to help in particular low-income residents repair those?
Yes, we, Andre talked a little bit about our short shared work program earlier. And so if we find that, you know, their yard line is just, it's leaky, or, you know, for some reason, it's not passing a pressure test, we typically work with the customer to get them in touch with West Texas Opportunities and others that have those funds available. And then they work with them to make sure that they get the plumber, they get out there that, you know, the work's being done quickly and it's being done right. And so, yes, we do have a program for that, both in P R P. And if we're just, if somebody smells gas and they go out and we find that they have something wrong with their yard line, we also refer them for financial assistance if their, if their piece of the system is not functioning properly.
Thank you. Council, any other questions? Dave, is there anything else you'd like to add?
Just appreciate your time.
Thank you, thank you for that.
Thank you, guys, for the continued partnership. We appreciate that you guys have been a great partner. We've tried to be a great partner with a lot of the projects the city's doing with roadways and otherwise. We really try to coordinate our projects around yours to make sure it's not getting dug up right after you put it down, or, you know, the repairs are being made after we leave, and that whenever our contractors leave, we want to leave the area better than the project. And so we just appreciate that partnership from all of you guys, and that we see you out in the community all the time, so we appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't think consider fully the general development plan, and by economic contract agreement for the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council members and staff. I'm going to hit the highlights. I will tell you, overall, our general development plan mimics the plans in recent years. We haven't strayed much from that at all, but I will highlight some things that have changed. One of the things that changed is in our strategic planning goals, we added a messaging program for the oil and gas industry. We talked about partnering with Midland and P S P in putting together something that would piggyback the Fuel, uh, Permian Fuels America program, if you remember the, if we, we did a, oh, a year, a year and a half ago. When we were in Washington, Congressman Fluger and other legislators told us it would be very helpful if we could tell the story of oil and gas much better and much more often. It would help them with some of those legislators who are in the middle, some of them who are maybe a little more moderate with regard to their view of the oil and gas industry, and certainly the same thing with voters. So we're considering putting together a plan, if you will, a messaging program that they could utilize that would give them some ammunition with regard to arguing their points on behalf of oil and gas, and possibly help change the minds of some, some of those voters who are in the middle to, so that we could get more favorable legislation, more favorable regulation with regard to what happens in our community. So that's, that's one item that we added. There's been no, there's been no commitment of money in that regard yet. We're not there yet, but we're going to pursue that, so we added it. The multi-year economic development agreements have been updated. We've got the facade and infrastructure agreements that have been updated. We did change the, if you remember, the boundaries of what we call downtown and the infrastructure and facade grants program, covers a specific area, as you well know. Most of that central part has been very well impacted, and we're getting very few requests from that very central part, which was where the most buying for the bus was, which obviously we were trying to do what we could with spending those funds. So we pushed out the, we had a four-tier program, and we converted that to a one and two-tier, a two-tier program with tier one and tier two, and pushed it out to the boundary so that we could get the same benefit. We think if we dangle the grant funds that would be available for tier one and tier two out towards the perimeter, that we'll have the same success. So we're going to try that and see, see what happens. It's been a very successful program. I think you, I think if you look around downtown, I think you'll see the benefits of it and what's ongoing, and obviously what's going to happen in the future. We have the contractors that we are going to be using this year, obviously the city administrative group, Chamber Economic Development Department, the Black Chamber, U T P V, Small Business Development Center, and MoTran. The Hispanic Chamber is not there, but Hispanic Chamber really problematic for purpose right now, it's not chunged, so there's no contract there. The dollars that you'll see expended, plan to spend when we send it gets to the budget are down slightly. That's a debt down, if you will. There's, there's some ups and downs there. Primarily the lowering of those costs is associated with part of the Permian Fuels America support funds that we were using to try to contact, like Slay Doors and whatnot, and get our message out and whatnot. And we're not going to spend those monies this year. So the effect is, is a bit slightly down. I would draw your attention to the, if you recall, the seed money that we approved several years ago, fifteen million dollars to try to accelerate the tech stop projects. We, we committed fifteen million dollars. We identified eleven and a half million dollars that we can spend on specific projects. Today, we've spent two and a half million dollars, and so we've got some of those funds left to spend. We're also going to look at other projects to see if maybe that three and a half million dollars that we've not committed to anything or intended to spend, if there's a place for that. We don't want to do it just to spend money, but there may be some projects that are now getting closer to becoming reality that we could accelerate by putting some seed money in along with tech stops funds. And if you remember, you know, those are typically, on average, you know, a million and a half to two million dollars on projects that may be twenty million dollars. So the one thing with regard to our contractors that I, that's, I'm not sure it's a change, we've got more consistent with the contracts. And one of the areas that we want to make sure that we're very consistent in is is the financial reporting requirements. We want to know, be assured that the funds that they, they spent were spent the way that they were supposed to spend it. So, so we're going to make sure that that happens this year with all, all five of the contractors. And then I have, I think that the gist of the general development plan, as I said, primarily is the same, if you think about what are we trying to accomplish in our investment corporation? And that's create really good jobs, really good opportunities for employees in our community, and capital investment to expand the tax laws. We're still going to do that. I would be happy to answer any specific questions anybody has in.
Council, any questions?
David, I have a question. O D C had five million dollars for affordable housing infrastructure, and apparently it was awkward in the way it was administered, and we were going to rewrite that or rethink it. Where are we at?
We, we really haven't come to any conclusions at this point, Councilman. There may be a possibility that we could do infrastructure, say take a smaller piece with a very much larger company with regard to infrastructure that's done for workforce housing. We've had some preliminary talks in that regard, but really haven't seen anything, looking for some proposals or requests from some of those larger builders, if you will. But at this point, we really haven't seen anything there. I think, you know, the, the point of that whole thing is, what we did didn't work, it just wasn't taken advantage of, there's no, so we didn't put anything in there, we didn't want to put anything in there if we didn't have something material that we were going to go forward with. I think trying to figure out how we can put in infrastructure and make sure that those funds are passed along to the buyer, and that the buyer enjoys those for multiple years. We wouldn't want somebody flipping a house, taking advantage of that, and then the next, next owner, you know, doesn't get, doesn't get the benefit of those buying down the cost of that house. But, but we're really, we still don't have anything at this point. And we probably just need to redevelop our, and try to find something.
Mr. McCann, I thought there was a company that was, that did request some funds for that, for help, for that Rochester property.
I haven't seen it.
It came across O D C, I remember. It came, it came up to the council, and we, we gave them the land for that, and there were newer scenes that we had with them, and I know it did come across with O D C, and it just, that was the argument, that was, that was what was brought up at that time, was they were going to rewrite the, the contract for that, and it just kind of sat still, nothing happened.
I'll go back and look at that, I'm sorry, I don't recall it.
Yeah, it was about a one point one million dollar ask.
Okay.
For the inspection for that, and it just kind of fell to the bottom.
I will double check this.
As I understand it, it was Chris Cole that had put together the, the language for the first project that was for workforce housing. So basically, the money would be coming in on the back end as all projects on O D C do, with more of a refund, once they have, you know, every company that has that criteria. What they were looking into is rewriting it, the reason is they just, this is how it's done, it was getting in on the front end. It was heavily debated out here. And so, and that point that you just said was actually on the forefront of the special.
How long ago was that?
It just happened last year. They already completed the other project. David, you've been on the O D C since you started, how can you not remember that? But, you know, but we're going to give you the benefit of the doubt, and so.
How long? O H F C?
Yeah. Well, what it came down, what it came down to is they wanted on the front side, and we don't do anything on the front side, and, and the company couldn't get bonded to get a loan, do it on the front side, or find some way to do it. So y'all, y'all going to look at rewriting the information to fund it up front, rather than on the backside of it.
I know from my opinion, and we discussed this several times, you know, Chris Cole had been the lead on how to write, and it's been, it's been on your agenda. Well, you weren't, you weren't, you know, chair at that time. This was, this was Tim's chair. But, you know, this, this got a lot of attention. Because the reason why is because we're anchoring it to be able to also bring manufacturing to the, and so there was a big debate between, you know, leasing or buying, and so, and that was also the incentives. So this is a very, very well-known project.
Because with that, because with that project, when they brought in those additional fifty houses.
Yeah.
That was a complete more threshold to bring in the manufacturing.
Because even Beanbo was looking at that, you know, of, of adopting that type of cold steel.
I do, I do remember that, that it wasn't being done under the housing, it wasn't being done under that five million dollars.
It was, yeah.
No, it was.
It was.
I think, I think it's.
And that's when we discovered there isn't five million dollars, that some of the money has been expended, so reinforce something and change. So, yeah, it was exactly that project. Here's on another, let me just ask this real quick. Is this just a typo here on the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three infrastructure with the Odessa Transportation Land, MoTran goal, that Pacifico Trade Corridor? Is that still a goal for the O D C?
Say that again, the.
In the Pacifico Trade Corridor?
Well, it is, it's a, it's a goal of MoTran, and we support MoTran, so yes, it's, it's still in effect. Was, was it not Rhodes USA?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I thought you said Rochester.
That's the property they're going to build.
Yeah.
And actually, they did get bonded for that also. They had all.
Right, and the issue was whether they were going to lease or whether they were going to build, as I recall, and they had, and we, it's not been resolved, which, you know, which way that they're.
Well, we're not, we're not talking about the manufacturing.
That's their business and second grant, that's what you're looking at.
You know, we, you know, we were under the impression, or at least I was, that they were still writing that, and Chris Cole was the lead on that.
And it was going to be done under that five million dollar reserve account, is what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, I just, I'm drawing a blank.
But you're going to have to change the language to be upfront instead of on the backside.
And it would be only a one-time deal, you know, because as soon as that, we had that discussion, you know, other developers that basically we approached, are you interested in buying the property or getting the property, doing it? Nobody had an interest. As soon as we talked about that deal, then everybody wanted it as well, you know, it's, it's too late.
Okay.
And what they wanted it, you know, on North, they kind of like, no, no, this is just the one you want here, that's it. And so we've just been patiently waiting to see where the progression is.
Okay, I'll check it out, first your power report back.
Thank you.
I think the big problem we had with it though, for a one-time exception, once you make one, you're going to make the worst. I think that was my big problem, was doing it that way. Anyway, it has not come back.
Yeah, yeah. Thinking on your work.
Council, any other questions? If you need more integration, you want to subject yourself to.
I'm here, it's your pleasure.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you for that report, sir.
Thank you.
Item four, consider award of contract for the purchase of office supplies. Ms. Amine. Ms. Amine, enjoy your presence. Thank you very much. Every time I ask for Ms. Amine, it's somebody else.
Michael Bata comes up. Hi.
How are you?
Good.
This is just an annual contract for office supplies. We have two beds, total office solutions, and office wise, in the ride of Midland, we want to give them the contract.
You want a contract with Midland? A cheaper one?
A cheaper.
What's the other one for?
Uh, here, not this, total office solutions.
What's, what's the difference?
Four thousand.
Out of a total of eight and four.
Office wise, seventeen thousand seven hundred and twenty-five.
And we're using a state contract with office wise.
And office solutions was twenty-one, eight ninety-one.
Any discussion on this, Council?
It's fourteen percent.
How does yours look, guys?
I'm good, I'm good.
Don't see much choice.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I'll hold it over there. Item five, consider approval of ESR contract. How you doing? I think we've had the pleasure of meeting you. How you doing, sir?
Doing great, sir. You don't tell me I'm pretending I'm a veteran with your information officer?
Oh, you're the one who matters.
He's been around for a million years.
Great.
A million years, you should say that, isn't that great?
Don't say that, you look the scooty guy.
It's a good, it's a good thing, right?
I'll probably brief, I'm here to consider the approval of the ESRI or ESR contract for investment through your term. It's a contract that we get every three years. As I read the summary, ESR software handles the intelligence and utility division to continue providing mapping services to cities, cities planners, leadership, developers, citizens. ESR is used to provide map data to interval departments of the city, including emergency communications, responders planning, fire enforcement, building inspections, utility department also using the mapping data to find and, and maintain the utility infrastructure. The last review of this contract was in 2019, which was also for a three-year term. The annual cost is thirty-nine thousand five hundred for a total cost of two thousand, uh, two hundred and seventy-one thousand five hundred over three years. The amount is accounted for annually and reflected for maintenance of software. ESR is the sole service provider of the software license. Any questions?
Are we now maintaining all these new situations for everyone? Is that we the sole provider now? We used to be able to get, now are we providing county, school district?
Well, we, we open up to be able to provide anybody that needs information. We house any information that we seek to be deemed important, correct? The good example would be, actually, utility district, we have a boundary, that's about it, so that we know whether we're in or out of there. When it comes to the school district, we maintain in our, or hosting our data, the boundaries, just so we know whether boundaries are at. Do they maintain something like that? I've never had, not been across something like that. So we maintain it just so that we can clear on the map, showcase it, host it, and have it readily available.
Okay. Council members want to hear that report you gave, and you want to go through the, through the census that we will be now going to be the primary provider of all these grants throughout the campaign?
Yes.
Okay. I thought that's what we were doing. Is this an increase of dollar amount? Is this an increase of dollar amount over the last, over the last year?
Yes, so we've been, for the 2010 decade as it is, right? We were considered to be under one hundred thousand population. We were at ninety-nine thousand nine hundred and forty. So that contract was great because we were considered a small government, and that there was a different contract there. And that one was coming in about sixty thousand. So for, for the period of that decade, we were under sixty thousand.
But that sign still says ninety-nine, so we should still get the sixty.
We can get the new sign.
Right? Until we get the new sign.
Until we get the new sign. So of course, if the 2020 census kicked in, they found us out that we're over a hundred thousand. So now we jump up to a hundred, you know, our population is a hundred and fourteen thousand now, so we jump up to the next tier. We're still considered a small group, we still get good benefits out of it. So, you know, my, my, what I tell you is that, but that's that, as it is 2020, we will continue to say that it's a hundred and fourteen every three year instead of them trying to get us as 2025, as 2026. Stay with 2020, we're a hundred and fourteen population, because after that, it's just, I guess, four considerations. So we're trying to keep, keep that number. We managed to do it for the 2010, to keep us at ninety-nine thousand nine hundred and forty, for all four contracts that we had, and we stayed there. And it was great until 2020 happened, and we jumped over a hundred thousand. And then, they tried to get us with, say you're close to the next tier, because of the 2022 census, somebody came somewhere along the way, and said, no, we want the 2020 number, keep us there. So we negotiated, that worked out.
Well, good, at least we got something. Council, any questions? Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you, sir. And I'm sorry, I mean, I apologize if you had to go to school with this gentleman, right?
It was, it was good. We had fun.
Item six, review and approve the city's investment policy and approve brokers and dealers and financial institutions. Is it fraud or fraud?
Fraud.
Fraud. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The item for you today is the City of Odessa, the Odessa Development Corporation's investment policy, which would be effective October first, two thousand and twenty-two. This policy is required under the Public Fund Investment Act, PFI, and is prepared in accordance with the Government Finance Officers Association, GFOA, recommended practices, and is required to be updated on an annual basis. There are very few changes in the policy this year compared to last year's policy, namely, of course, that the year was changed, and there was one grammatical change I found that we updated. Following there are just a few points of emphasis as far as what the purpose of this policy is. The policy includes all financial assets of the city and of the ODC as well, except for the Fireman's Relief and Retirement Trust Fund. The policy defines, identifies and applies to the objectives of the investment policy as well as allowable investments, and outlines the reporting requirements of the, of the policy. The policy identifies the investment officers, namely, the Assistant City Manager of Administrative Services and the Director of Finance. And finally, the policy lists the four approved broker dealers, which are the same as the four last year, except for the fact that one broker, FHM, has a different representative that we're working with at this point, with that. With that, Mr. Mayor, we have to address any questions or concerns that the council may have.
Council, any questions? Thank you very much, appreciate it. Item seven, consider resolution on the ASMR PD to find and set up an end of funding for appropriate award funds for additional inventory and actuarial expenditure for work grant funds from the 2023 credit resistance shield grant program.
Good afternoon.
Go ahead.
This is simply a request for approval for us to apply for the, the Public Safety Office's Criminal Justice Division full resistance shield grant program after the tragedy in Uvalde, the government's office decided to move forward with this grant program. Unfortunately, we already spent some money, bought some shields, and, and some other reaching equipment, or this amount would be much higher. So this amount will, the thirty-three thousand dollars that we're asking for in this grant program will, person sixty, bullet resistant shields, there are the smaller shields, there are the full-body shields, there are one-man shields, that, that one person can, can operate easily, and this will outfit the rest of the department.
Is this going to be just one, this one annual year, or will it be a continued program?
Okay, as far as the grant program, who knows?
Who knows?
I'm just also understanding that these, these shields have a life, a shield life of about five years. They're up for about five years, just like the, the bullet group, bullet resistance desk they have replaced, they're maybe five years. Chief, what is the caliber rating for the shield? These are rifle resistant, so you're looking up to, I'll say, three oh eight, thirty oh six. So they will, they will stop at a decent price. We equip our officers with rifle-resistant bests that would stop at thirty oh six. One round. Multiple rounds.
Now, so it was a best automatically integrated five years, or?
Well, at that point, it's, they don't guarantee them, so if they're not guaranteed by.
I can't figure out what would happen if it wasn't shot at.
Well, it's, it's the, actually, the fibers start to deteriorate. If they're not, yeah, the manufacturers will not guarantee that they will stop the rate.
That's exactly.
So we're trying to put my officer out there without that.
I just, this, this logical question raised, is just how do they deteriorate?
That way you go buy another, another set of funds.
It's called, it's called built-in obsolescence, right? Kind of like hockey stuff.
Council, any questions?
Which brings to the next question. What do we do with the old vests?
Okay, there are, there are a couple things that we have done with the old vests. In the past, we've actually had to destroy them. Right now, we are donating them to the Texas Rangers. And they're, they're using them for research and that sort of thing, ballistic research.
I know, I'm pregnant.
No. But the last, yeah, for the last, we've donated to them for, for, they're doing ballistic research for those.
Target practice.
Okay. Council, any other further questions? Chief, thank you very much for the presentation.
Item eight, consider ordinance to modify the list of signalized intersections. Prohibitive parking zones, any parking in your zone.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, how are you doing today?
I saw you falling asleep back there, you dove off a few times.
This first agenda item is, has three different components in the traffic ordinance, needs some updating. The first one is about the list of signalized intersections. So I need to add the four signals that are currently under construction, Dawn 52nd, Fodre P Bar, Fodre Trasamontes, Goldberg Yukon. The next section is prohibitive parking zones. And, and what I was thinking on this one was the recently completed Estancia War Park. It's a three-lane roadway, there's no area on-street parking. What I want to do is I want to prohibit parking before it becomes developed, so I want to take care of it now. And the third section is parking meter zones. I actually had a request from Casey, there's a new business coming in on the northeast corner of Texas and Fourth, and there's existing parking meters on Fourth, and it was a request of the new business to, to remove those parking meters. So what I did was I went through and I looked at Fourth Street between Texas and Jackson, and removed the parking meters from the ordinance, so we can help that.
And whose cost?
I'm sorry?
Whose cost? Who's paying for the, for the removal, the city?
Oh, yeah, we, we do it in-house. We, traffic engineering, we maintain those parking meters, we maintain them, we collect the money.
How many, how many, how many meters?
Oh, there's probably, there's probably five meters there.
I tell you, that's a huge budget.
Exactly.
Council, we really want to consider this?
No money.
You got to get it, we got to get revenue wherever we can.
How, I know it's on the minds of every council member out here, but when are we going to expect those lights to be on?
How did I know that was coming today? As soon as I said, I heard that I'm supposed to get power today. If we get the power today at Dawn 52nd, we'll have it running tomorrow.
Are you waiting on Encore?
Yeah. Um, the, the, I've been dealing with two different reps at Encore for Dawn, the Dawn signal and the Fodre signal. I don't know when Fodre's coming, but Dawn and 52nd, keep your fingers crossed for today.
I'm hoping. I get lots of calls on that one still.
Of course, I'm getting one on Fodre, so.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Now, here's another really important question, since we've been impacted by the budget on the, on the map, and I get asked about when are we going to get new population signs? I said, I have no idea who even handles that.
Usually, Texas.
That's what I said.
Yeah.
And so, okay.
Yeah.
Everybody's just.
And, and every now and then I hear something about the population signs, and.
I do too. Every now and then, I said, what?
Right.
Yeah, okay. Okay, now I got an answer, and I know who to direct them to, I got a number for Texas. Council, any other questions? Al, anything else?
I've got one more, the next one.
Okay, that's right, you do. Item nine, consider resolution for Texas to seek rail funding for the upcoming Texas legislative session. Interested topic, go for it.
So the NPO reached out to us that a nonprofit group, and their name is Texas Rail Advocates, that, that nonprofit group is seeking Texas municipalities to, to offer up a resolution in support of Texas going after additional money in this Texas legislative session to, for railroad projects and funding for freight and passenger rail services. So that's what this, this agenda item is, is a resolution in support of that nonprofit group to follow up with Texas for that additional cost.
Do these get help as you're going after?
No.
It's supposed to meet up with an increase, sir.
Oh.
And, and so, it's really up on our debt line. Do they, time, time for them to just begin their resolution?
They do not.
Okay.
They do not.
So they just update on.
It's, it's a push, it's a push towards Texas to, to end the legislative session to, for funding, but projects or what would happen?
Let's go up to, we have that, that meeting up on, they called, did ever send that to you though?
Yes, I think that's September ninth.
Ninth, right, okay. So they're going to lighten the rail, or?
I think, I think reading through their description, it's more rehab-type projects, yes.
We don't have any passenger service.
Correct.
That happened in the nineties, I was trying to, trying to establish a, a route from DFW to El Paso, but, you know, they're, they're on that San Antonio highway nine, in the end, it was just making sure that Amtrak maintained or funded on the East Coast, because we paid for that. And so, and UP line wasn't going to allow. The thing is, is that this is something that would be beneficial to Odessa, for us to actively consider. So once we meet with them on the ninth, we'll see what they have to say, and see if they have any recommendations, resolutions, and we'll bring back the discussion. That's good.
And they just make that, and prior to the last ten years of Texas, there's a whole off sale of nineteen billion dollars in federal rail funding.
Oh, yeah, so, oh, yeah.
So is this a lobbyist group, or, I, I don't understand a, this group is.
A lobby group.
Isn't, okay, made of land, okay.
In, in, in the recent times, since, you know, since we had the COVID, we had a lot of situations where there are many plans about this country to start discussing how to find alternative work shipping. Freight is apparently one of the big primary projects, and so this is why they contacted us. So, council, any other questions? Al, anything else?
No, sir.
All right, thank you very much.
I appreciate it.
Item ten, approve the public improvement district policies and guidelines.
Bill? Me, me, council, Mr. Mayor, this agenda I must consider the approval of a policy for a public improvement district guideline and policy book. This is also known as the PID program. Back in July, we brought this to council for a discussion during a work session, and we now have worked with the legal department to clean up a policy that we found from the City of Lubbock to institute PIDs in the City of Odessa that the council chooses to. This policy, as we described, does provide city-owned parkland to the city that the developer was responsible for initially developing, but through a special assessment, the homeowners in that area will fund the park in that area. That includes the, the improvements to that area as well as the maintenance of, of the parkland. This was an item that was identified within the Parks Master Plan that was recently approved by council, and this was also something that was brought to us by Beanbo Holmes, who is in the process of annexation and planning and zoning a piece of property for an additional over a thousand homes in, in North Odessa, and they want to utilize this, this mechanism. So this is, again, the initial policy that will provide a roadmap for the council. Any actual PID that's established does have to be petitioned to the council. As per the policy, it's in accordance with law, you know, over fifty percent of the, the owners of the property and fifty percent of the owned property or the taxable value has to petition for, for a PID, and it's subject to the council's approval. So this is our, our first step in establishing a PID, and probably have, have any questions?
Council, any questions?
And we're, and we're not making this mandatory, though.
No, no, sir, this is not mandatory, this is just something in place for any developer that wants to take advantage of this option.
So our, our focus and our encouragement is for new development to put this in before there's any homes built.
Correct.
Because going back is. Because going back is, we know is.
Yes, sir, and this, uh.
That doesn't work, at least what Denise not discovered on meetings is that it just doesn't work.
Yes, sir, uh, we are going to have this live with our development department. So planning and zoning is of course the, uh, initial contact a development group has with the city. And so they will make them aware that this is a mechanism that can be utilized for, for park development.
And we'd encourage them to do that, I think, maybe.
Yes.
So, Bill, just to reiterate, uh, this is the policy and guidelines that will help the council make those decisions. But ultimately, when the council is presented with an actual PID, they will have complete discretion whether to approve that PID.
Correct, right.
Based on whether or not the council sees value in that, in that particular site or whatever.
Yes, sir, this does not obligate the council to accept any PID that comes. Uh, all PIDs must be through petition and are subject to council approval.
Council, any further questions? Everybody read through 15,000 for the application. Also, um, drainage improvements.
Yes, sir, and the reason that we had drainage improvements there, we did see, uh, Councilmember Thompson, Councilmember Slaughter, uh, were, uh, were in Lubbock when we went to the VIVO, uh, uh, PIDs and they had, uh, retention basis drainage basis that they made into, to walking trails. So they are able to, instead of just giving you a drainage base in something that's, uh, aesthetically pleasing and it can be utilized as well.
We do those in there. And, yeah, I've seen those up in Lubbock. Okay. No further questions? Councilmember France, you good?
I'm good.
Bill, anything else on the side?
I have a.
Next. Okay. Going to go out to item 11, consider adopting a new rate review mechanism with Atmos Energy. That's why they're still here.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Uh, on April 1st of, uh, this year, Atmos Energy filed, uh, what is, uh, known as an RRM, a rate review mechanism with system served cities and the Texas Railroad Commission. This is essentially, uh, a request to, uh, increase rates. The city of Odessa is a member of a steering committee of 70 West Texas cities certified by Atmos Energy's West Texas Division. Uh, the original proposal that Atmos filed was for an increase of 8.77 million, uh, annually amongst its West Texas, uh, cities customers. Uh, we do have, uh, legal representation, uh, during these, uh, rate cases. Uh, our attorney is Lloyd Dawson, uh, is not only the attorney for the city, but for the steering committee. Uh, they reviewed the filing and they have worked with Atmos Energy to settle the, uh, rate increase, um, at a, a total of 6.72 million with the West Texas Steering Committee cities. Uh, this will go into effect October 2020, uh, I'm sorry, 2022, uh, if council does, uh, uh, approve. Uh, the last increase was in October 2021 for 152,000. Uh, just to let council know that the residential increase is 6.21%. Uh, commercial is 5.11%. The average residential bill will increase, uh, $3.36, but this is based off of the highest usage month of December. Specifically the coldest, uh, month with the most gas usage. So, uh, so residents will see that type of increase, uh, based on their, uh, their most used, uh, uh, bill. And, and working with the, uh, the legal council and the steering committee, it is recommended that, uh, that this be approved.
I got one thing I disagree with. We're going to recap and bring that, uh, that assessment to February. But I'm listening because we're still wearing shorts around here in summer.
I have a question. Is this increase based on, and I can't remember how they, what they call the unit of gas.
This, this.
Yeah. It's, it's based entirely on that and not the other fees and?
Correct, because it's my understanding that this is based on the actual, uh, costs that are associated. It's not based on the initial consumption charges or anything of that nature.
That makes sense, the butter is up and then the hit is the increase on that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I use natural gas about four months out of the year, but I get a $20 bills on, on the other, the other rate.
So like to the, to the city, Atmos has a, a standard charge based on your, your, your meter. And I believe Encore has the same type of charge as a base charge for the, the meter.
It still do.
And then you pay for additional usage.
Yes, yes. Okay.
Well, Atmos is still here, you want to interrogate them and bring them up here?
Don't do that to me. I don't mind paying for the gas, I don't like paying for no gas.
Any questions, council? Thank you very much. Thank you for the presentation, Bill. Uh, item 12, consider an approval of the MOU T budget for fiscal year 2022, 23. Let's go next.
This agenda item is just to, um, approve the MOU T budget for, um, 2023. Um, the total amount of their budget is, uh, $6,743,255. Each city, uh, Odessa and Midland put in a, uh, local contribution of 600,000 each. This is the same amount as last year, but it was not an increase for either city. Um, they did have a increase in their overall budget of about, uh, 6.7 point 1%. Um, in looking through their budget, you'll see they did a lot of changes, uh, with some of their personnel costs, moving it from one category to another, but overall in total, there wasn't a huge increase. Um, the, uh, they had some savings in some of their, um, benefit i- line items and some increases that kind of offset. Uh, material supplies was pretty close to the same. Um, it is required, uh, as they are a joint venture between the, both cities that, uh, we approved their budget. Midland has already approved their budget, so it's up to the city, our city, I'm going to approve their. Now, answering any questions you might have. Tom serves on the board as does Mayor, so they've been through that review process.
Council, what's Paul's, you have any questions?
Most of this is statutes by federal through the law.
Right.
And so we really don't have a lot of flexibility, other than the $600,000. I think that's the only flexibility we have.
Um, yeah, I mean, um, most of the funding for, um, the, the train, the bus transit system is federal and state funding. The amount that this, both cities are putting in, plus the little bit of their income that they get is the local match because a lot of their grants are an 80/20 match. And so you have to have local dollars put into it in order to operate them.
Are we at the 80 or are we still at the 20?
No, the federal side is 80 and local match is 20.
So is that going to move them there? You're going to stay there?
Now, um, I would suspect that possibly next year, they may be, they may be making a slight increased request of the 600. I think we've been at that for three years, this is the third year.
The 600, is that, is it maximum or, uh, for, is we required, was that the minimum?
It, it just depends on whatever their budget is and whatever they can obtain grant funds for and ridership and all of that, so. I think we started out way back, way in, 300,000, 350,000 dollars. So it's grown over the years to that amount. They did go through a, um, pretty extensive, uh, comprehensive operational analysis last year. And they are making some changes. I don't know if, if you don't ride the bus, sometimes you don't know what those changes are. They extended the hours to an extra hour later in the day and then extra hours on, uh, Saturday. Uh, they'll be working on, um, they're doing some new routes. They may have new stops, um, so there's some changes that may be coming up in the future. We'll be bringing those back to you all because those require city approval as well.
So, um, let me answer this question, are we the only entity within the county that puts money into it along with the city of Midland?
Yes, the two cities are the only ones that come.
Do they run to the county? Outside the city limits?
No, most of there is, is within the city limits. They have to get to the city limits and then.
But we are inside the county. We're the largest, uh, we're the largest landmass in, you know, incorporated, uh, corporation within the city.
Familiar, where do they all come from? Where have you been talking to? Yeah, you're exactly right.
This is probably one of the best leveraged dollars the city does because we put 600,000 in the federal and state government, but they put the 80% well-leveraged.
Yeah.
So 1.2 to the 6.7 million is what we, what both cities.
Take it where we can get it. Council, any questions? Good. All right, we're going to move on to, uh, 13, your favorite part. Uh, consider approval of the ODC budget, full of it, why? Physical year 2022, 23, let's go next.
This item is to approve the ODC budget for 22, 23. Um, they're required without the budget and the city is required to review it. Uh, the ODC board approved this budget on August 17th, uh, 22, their board meeting. Uh, no, um, the total revenues are at 11,580. Um, the total operating expenses are at 2,425,000. And then the business incentive expenditures are at 58 million. And let me explain that a little bit. Um, with ODC, uh, they have a large fund balance. It's sitting at, um, at July 30th, 22, that balance was at 66 million. But only 27 million of that is, uh, unreserved. So as the grants are awarded to each of the entities, um, those monies are reserved within the fund balance section. But until we actually pay them out, they're not expended. So there's always a big expenditure budget for business incentives in order to pay out those amounts and for the board to have access to any unreserved monies to do any new projects that may come up during the year. So this is typical, um, we increased the revenue budget about 2 million because we saw the increase in sales tax this last fiscal year over the prior year. Um, and as of 8/31, they were at 11 million, so we raised the budget to 11,500,000. All the other changes were kind of minimal, some up and down, so nothing of any importance.
Council, any questions? City, any?
Hi.
Any doubts?
No, none.
Okay. We're going to move on to item 14, adopt the city of Odessa fiscal year 2022, 23 annual budget.
Hey, this, uh, as you know, we held our public hearing, uh, at the last council meeting, which was August the 23rd. And so now we're ready to, um, adopt the budget at the next council meeting. Um, we didn't have any comments or questions from, uh, citizens at the budget hearing. Uh, and we're just ready to go forward. And if y'all have any additional comments or questions, yeah.
Counsel, any additional questions on the, uh, annual budget?
I just have a statement to make that, that, you know, this new budget, this new revenue rate on the property tax makes us dependent upon the sales tax of 44 million. If that falls short for some reason, especially since we've got salary study coming, that we could, not, not that we're walking on a tight road, but we just have to really pay attention this next year because there's still some unknowns with the budget between now and the first of the year. That being the first responder sellers that we're having a study done on. And, uh, and the ad valour tax does not cover our budget. So we're having, you know, the sales tax, which is, it's as if, you know, when I was, because I was in business, I was a salesman. If I need more money, I could sell something. We don't have that luxury here. We just have to take what happens, whether it's good or bad. If the market crashes, I'm talking about the oil gas market, we could look at, we could look at 19 or 20 again and less sales tax revenue than we're getting currently. We're enjoying it as well we can while we're getting it now, and it's substantial. You know, I don't think it'll change, but the way our federal government's going, who knows? They can't even, you know, they can't plug their electric cars into California, so they can't get anywhere. And then cars keep running out of electricity in front of coal mines. So, anyway, that being said, you know, it just makes me, as councilman, white, so nicely put it the other night. From here to there, you know, I'm just reiterating that it's a prob, it could be a problem. Hope not, don't think it will be. I'm an optimist at heart, but just making everybody aware that we may have to do some, make some tough decisions later on in the year if those sales tax revenues fall there at all.
I will echo that sentiment and I believe in your optimism when we dedicated $10 million to the fodry out of the general fund. And, uh, and so, uh, you know, that was a concern, that's something that we brought up.
Yep.
And so the thing is, uh, there was no hesitation on the $10 million for the general fund. And so, you know, we reiterated where we saw the percentage of, uh, of, you know, what sales tax have to cover. You know, we're not solely dependent on sales tax just because, you know, we adopted the known revenue. We've always been dependent on that sales tax. And, you know, that's why, uh, you know, coming into, uh, being elected, I really reiterated on the ODC, we really need to basically, uh, focus and refocus ourselves because originally when we, this community passed, you know, the, um, uh, ODC for that sales tax is to be able to really address what we do here, not mineral values and not exploration, but, uh, service. And so that creates sales tax. So, you know, I, I, I agree, uh, Council, uh, Thompson, that, you know, we are hindered. But, you know, everybody was very confident that the inflation would continue to happen and we're going to see those increase sales. Uh, we're always going to be beholden, uh, and so until we finally wind up getting more, uh, ad valorem. Uh, and that's why, uh, you know, we continue to work to try to support ODC and their efforts and what they're doing. That was the goal from this community in 96, and I think that continues to be the goal. And that's why we, uh, we, uh, we adopted, you know, their goals that were, uh, redefined in 2017. So I think we're all in agreement, you know, with, with that statement, sir.
Well, just the only difference is that the $10 million from fodry came out of fund balances and the 44 million is on the come. So we had that and we didn't have to borrow any. We've had judicious staff for all these years, and the fund balance is very healthy. And so it's a small portion out of the fund balance. But I don't disagree with you at all. I think that, uh, the way things are going, I'm pretty confident the sales tax is going to stay up. But I just want to make sure that everybody understands that.
Counsel, any further discussion or comments on the side?
Totally noted.
You three could ask for a motion to adjourn.
Cindy's not very.
He's still got talking to do.
We got, I'm going to do.
I have eight items, we only got three.
Pull up a chair, you can appear if you want. Sort, we're not, item, uh.
16.
Item 16, consider. We're 15, right?
We're going to levy the tax.
I'm confusing you here. So consider levying the tax for the 2022 tax year, 2022, 23 fiscal year, and this one's.
Okay, this agenda item will be the, uh, the meeting where we, uh, talk about the tax rate. Our notice was put in the paper this past Saturday, y'all saw it, so that we have notified the public. Uh, we will take a vote, our first vote on the meeting, uh, September the 13th. Uh, we're voting on the known revenue rate as our proposed rate of 0.483791. Um, all the, um, exemptions that the city has granted in the past, the homestead exemption, senior citizen, disabled person, all of those are still in place at the same amounts. The total taxable value was 10,563,344,315, and that was a 3.28% increase as compared to the prior year taxable value. I will note that in the notice, um, they put in a prior year value. That's the final adjusted value at the end of the year, not at the budgeted amount that we follow in doing all of our, um, budget requirements and doing our comparisons to years. So, um, that is a different number, so it shows it at 2.07, which is not the, the same comparison that we use. They use end of the year where it's all been adjusted for different things throughout the year. Okay. Um, The next, do we have any questions on the tax rate?
Any questions? We're going to move on to item 16.
Yes. So item 16 is a requirement that we have to, because we are raising more funds than we did in the prior year for property taxes, we have to ratify the dollar increase. And so this is under Local Government Code 102.007. There's a slight increase in the tax rate, but we had an increase in the values as well as we had new property added to the tax roll to the amount of 1,186,426 dollars worth of property taxes. So this is just a requirement that we have had the council vote on, that it is increasing the dollar amount of the taxes.
Counsel, any questions on item 16? Move on to item 17.
Okay, this agenda item is Approval of the Water Rate Change. This is the first approval of the ordinance, so we will vote on it a second time for the last meeting in September. To assist with the continued rise in cost of equipment, debt service, maintenance, repairs, and replacement of deteriorating water lines, sewer lines, well, this one's just water lines, but valves, all of that type of thing. And this is across all account types, it's a 6%. 2.5 is the regular incremental increase that we have been doing for the last several years. Three and a half percent increase is to pay half of the new debt service payment. We're doing that in two stages, so we'll pick up the other half increase next year. This has the effect of a five, on a 5,000 gallon user of $2.18 a month. And you have the resolution that shows all of the rates as they are changed. And you will note that the seniors and disability, disabled people all still get a significant decrease in their rate. It's $7.61 on the smallest users, so they do get a break on the price. Answer any questions on that?
Counsel, any question? Move on to item 18.
Yeah, this one is on the sewer rate change. Again, the same changes, the 6% on a 5,000 gallon user, this is $1.32. And again, it's to cover all the increase in cost, debt service, and sewer line replacements.
I think you're done?
Nope.
No more?
Solid waste, don't forget about trash.
Yeah, trash.
In the past couple of years, we've been doing 2.5%. We raised that to 3.5% this year, which is, single family, this is a 75 cent a month increase. A lot of this is due to the increased cost of fuel that we've all experienced. Thank goodness it's gone down some. Our trucks have increased by 30%, I think it's 30%. And then our tipping fees at the landfill went up about 6% this year. So the 3.5, we, we increased it an extra percent and helped cover some of those costs this year.
The, the, Michael, we're going to see fuel costs go back up November 8th, and we just, do we have, when we see that, that recurrence, or are we prepared to be able to cover the cost of that increase?
We're prepared to cover this cost. We, we saw a significant increase over budget this year as a result of what happened earlier this year. So this is taking some of that into account. Hopefully we won't see as big a jump as we did.
It goes up, it goes up faster. That strategic reserve, that goal has to be replaced, it's going to be at a high cost. Counsel, any questions on item, thank you? Any doubts about that? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item 20, Consider Unopposed Candidates to be Elected to Office. District 3 and 4.
Thank you for hearing, Counsel. As you know, the filing deadline has passed for the applications on the ballot, which was August the 22nd. We have two districts, districts 3 and, and 4, that have uncontested candidates, so there's one candidate in each district. And so I have certified the unopposed candidates, and it will be presented to, it was in your, in your package, and it will be presented along with the ordinance requirement and where the governing body can declare those unopposed candidates as elected. Their names will still be on the ballot as uncontested, declared elected if council chooses to declare them elected. They will not be put in office until after the November 8th election.
After the election certifies, which should be the 22nd?
Hold on.
Well, more or less?
More or less, more or less.
Depending on, depending on the campuses of the, of the election by the...
Yes, yes.
Hopefully takes...
Hopefully, yes.
Five days, that's it. Let's see. Now, one other note is since we now, it's only one district that we have a contested election, but because we have voting centers, we're still required to pay half because everybody can vote regardless of the, the district.
Correct. But I will say that the ECUT is having an election, so they're going to pay, it's going to be split by three, but the county, the city, and ECUT, so it will actually reduce our costs. Isn't that great news?
Make sure we hold everybody to that. Got to check those. Counsel, any questions? Any doubts? Okay, we're going to move on to item 21. Thompson?
I, I was asking Norma if we had a travel policy in place, ordinance in place, and what I discovered was that we have one, but it's a 1996 one, which it answers to the Finance Committee, which, I'm not sure we got a Finance Committee anymore. This meeting has, yeah, has taken the place of the Finance Committee, so I just think that needs to be amended to reflect our current structure as opposed to the structure that was there, that you voted for in 1996. I just think we need to restructure, so.
So that's a long time ago.
It was, it was just yesterday for me.
So what specifically are we looking at?
Just take out Finance Committee?
Yeah, we just got to, just, just that it has to be approved of, I guess, by the council or a mayor pro tem or mayor pro tem.
The thing is, what, can we discuss the process of what it is now for, for the council travel?
Yes. You can discuss. Yes, I guess.
What is it? That's what he's asking.
Not saying can we, I'm asking.
Okay, so when council has a trip that is related to city, I will fill out the travel authorization form, fill out the appropriate, when the registration, hotel, meals, airfare, how they're going to get to and from that location. Then I would have the person, the council member or the mayor, sign it. And then at that point, if the mayor's traveling, I get the mayor pro tem to sign off on that travel request. If it's a council member who signs off on it, is going to be the traveler, then I will get the mayor to sign off of it. They'll take their trips, admit their receipts, I kind of vet their receipts, make sure everything's in order, fill out the after-travel expense report. After that is done, the, the traveler will sign it, and then I will, again, get the mayor to sign it. If it's a council member, if the mayor has taken the trip, then the mayor pro tems will sign the, the form, and it's submitted to the Finance Department.
The Finance Department? It has to go from there after that. When we say Finance Department?
It goes to, to the Finance Department. They will review it, make sure everything's in, in check, and if, if that's the case, then if we owe the council mayor or the mayor money, then we will have them reverse.
Or vice versa. Is there any stringent items that the city will not cover? Because I know we discussed that in '96, and, you know, obviously one of them is obviously alcohol. But there are other parameters within that policy that we passed in 1996 that we want to make sure that the city would not be beholden to when having someone, you know, and that's, is not just a policy for the DA's, it's also a policy that we have implemented for the entire staff, especially our department heads and our appointees. And so this is something that is retroactive across the board, that, you know, everyone that is traveling on, on, on business or representing the city adheres to this, to this policy. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And so is there any other items that we, that we do not cover? I'm sure you weren't prepared for that, but can you make those available to the council?
Sure.
Hey, Norma, doesn't this specifically, this one specifically for the mayor and council members?
Yes, this particular policy is for only mayor and council.
But it's something retroactive.
And I think it's just that Finance Committee thing, right?
The fact that...
It no longer grows your Finance Committee.
There's no Finance Committee.
Okay, by the mayor, right?
So you just requested that we just wipe out Finance Committee?
Finance Committee, and I, and I think it's appropriate for other council members to be notified when councilor, mayor are traveling, and, and we know where everybody's going and what they're doing. I just think it's courtesy of the council.
Let me ask you this, what, what, what do we think the end by that, you know, we notify everybody? What, what, what's the thought?
So I don't have to find out secondhand if you traveled to Mexico, and I get challenged on it, and I have no idea what you're talking about.
What would be the coolest challenge to me?
My constituents.
Okay.
So like your constituents, and I think it's only fair that I basically know where the mayor's gone or where Peter's gone or councilor's sworn, or I just think it's...
I think it's a communication thing.
Yeah, it's a communication thing. But one of the things, and the reason why, because I wind up, had to, had to talk about this, and here's, here's, here's the reason why, because I was asked why I hadn't brought it over to the council, real simple. This was over a 10-minute process, and one of the things is, is that this is a business of where you have company that wanted to, wants to invest in Odessa. For the reason is that it was reported to be Odessa American, and, and so the thing is, is that one of the stipulations that I heard is that when it did get out to the, to the public, all of a sudden the value of the property went up four times. And so, very sensitive information, and, and this, and, and so I was specifically asked by, and reported it over to the city, you know, to the council, put it on the work session. I said, for the reason, I was waiting for the investors to travel to, to City of Odessa to make the presentation. Everyone else on the desk was invited, only a small handful attended, and so, and, and that's okay, but the thing is, is that the reason why it took so long for me to make a decision to, to travel is because I knew it was mean, I was going to be scrutinized, and because of the history that, you know, that's why I started this Mexican initiative was so controversial in this community, I made it very known that that was my hugest, biggest, you know, hesitation to want to be able to, until I knew it was vetted and it was a, a, it was worthwhile to present to the council. You know, the thing is, is that, I, I'm not going to jump to assumptions, I think our policy is, is, is a good one. I think that we really thought it out in 1996. I, you know, if you want to wipe out the, the finance, i- i- is fine, but one thing that I will caution is that if any of us are basically going to be representing the city in a business discussion, things of that nature, when we notify the council, it becomes public information. You know, one of the things that we want to do is we have a, a compliance committee, and we have discussed so much in the compliance committee about the sensitivity of the information presented at, at the compliance committee. At one time, us as council members spoke about applying the open meetings act to everything, and one, and that was one of the things that we really discussed. I don't have an issue in, in, in putting in the council, but I do want everyone to keep in mind that sometimes this information, you know, is critical, for the reason is because when you're in dealing negotiations with property and investment, things of that nature, vice versa, you know, we have a situation where the, the seller says, hey, look, there's real value, let me just up it four times and it's really bad. And so, so, you know, this is, this is all I caution on this.
Why are we dealing, we deal with sensitive information all the time, and the council has lots of stuff that we get, have privilege to that, that the public doesn't, so, I mean, that's, that's kind of, you know, but...
But there's got to be some way that we can communicate, I don't know, Natasha.
Well, one of the things you could do is, it was with the Finance Committee, so you could appoint a committee if you wanted to, to handle the travel, or fill it in as you, as you wish, if you want to do the mayor pro tem or in my part. So it would be the council's discretion as to how, what they want to replace Finance Committee with. I caution you in saying work session or something like that in case we move back, you know, to a briefing, that gives you, you know, the leverage to be able to have particular people review it, or one person.
You know, I, I, I think the policy is, is a good one, I think it's, it basically, it has weathered the test of time, you know, you know, this is basically about me going to Mexico, and I knew going in there was going to be a huge issue, and, and I don't...
So you knew I was going to get hammered over it?
No, I knew you were going to have to walk away from it.
I wasn't, I mean, here's my...
Here's another issue. I went to Abilene a few months back ago to go to, to attend and take on the government conference training. I didn't notify you, but I didn't get any, I didn't get any response from you, I didn't, I didn't, this was brought up back then.
It wasn't public information, nobody, nobody knew about it.
But it's the same scenario, though, I still went on the, I still went on the city sponsorship.
Could have been nice doing your own, but that's me. You knew when I was, I went to DC, you know, I was going to DC, I made a public, made you all aware of this.
We were all about it.
We were all about it. Yeah, I know, so I told you I was going, that's, I'm just saying, it's just, I just don't like running around having secrets, that's all I'm saying.
There are no secrets, the thing is, is...
At your point.
You, you made it an issue, and, and, and that's fine, you know, there's, you know, you have every right to question it, but the thing is, you're making a policy change center because I traveled to, to, to Mexico. I also traveled to New Orleans.
I know, that's it.
And so the thing is, is that these are legitimate business travel cities.
So then why?
And, and, you know, no, you haven't, and I'm not making an accusation that you are, but the thing is, is that, I say it's constituents, you know, it's, it's Councilman Thompson that had an issue with it, and, and that's fine, you know, that's okay. You have every right to question it. The thing is, is that there are no secrets. I've been, I was out front, and, you know, all you had to do was just give me a call.
But I didn't tell about it till you...
Well, you know, the thing is, is that there's a communication, it works both ways. And so, once again, I think the policy's fine, mayor pro tem signs it, you know, if it's somebody else, it, it jumps the dimes. But if this council wants to further discussion, to make suggestions, we'll put up for the next work session, and we'll continue to discuss the policy. But one thing I caution is that I do not believe to create a diff, another layer of bureaucracy by creating another committee.
Okay, we need another committee. I, I think the mayor pro tem...
I think the mayor pro tem is fine.
Works good. And a little bit, I, I didn't know about the troops until read in the paper. And, and kind of with, kind of with Steve, I had people asking me, you know, so what they go, what they go for? And I said, I don't have a clue that they even went anywhere.
And I was trying to get to the presentation, because, you know, I was waiting for them to call back so we could have the presentation, but, you know, I had to, I had to do the interview. I, you know, the OA called and says, hey, what's going on? It was a morning session and an afternoon session, and so the thing is, it was, you know, I laid it all out, and, you know, what I feared was going to happen, happened, but, you know, the thing is, is that there's still positives that come out of the trade. You know, we've had investment, we're going to continue to have investment, and so we, there is a huge group out of Mexico that's very interested in investment in City of Odessa, and that will benefit not only City of Odessa, but Etrican. And so when they're ready, we'll be able to, to, to discuss that. Except the thing is, is that, you know, when we talk about Nacero, you know, we wind up being cautious as well. All of these business deals are crucial for ad valorem, for progressing City of Odessa forward. If we're going to evaluate everything equity, that's true, equity across the board, they're all pertinent, you know, whether it's a million dollars to, you know, $7 billion, you know, they're all pertinent to ad valorem, you know, so let's keep this in mind that we're going to do this, keep it all like regardless of the place, of the location of origin, and so, but, you know, the thing is, is that I had to respect the investors and what they were trying to do. the investors and what they were trying to do, and I, I've asked them, I said, "What can I say? You let me know what's, what's, what's sensitive, what's not sensitive." And so, uh, so I, I gave it, they actually came in there and gave them this carte blanche, but, you know, the thing is, is that, um, you know, we wind, for right now, you know, there, there, a property, uh, a purchase of one property has been compromised because of the, of the story, because we weren't able to make that presentation, we had to get, we were forced to, to, to speak to the, to the media before we could actually speak to the council. And, uh, and those things happen, but when things are leaked, that's, that's, that's the, uh, that's the consequences of it, you know, and so we just move on and we deal with it, that is business.
So, uh, council, ask for any further discussion on the site. All right, we'll move on to Councilman Spas' favorite part of the, uh, of the work session. I move right here to, to, to Richard, do we have a second, do we have a, 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 a long shot, uh, that you like, Councilmember Spas, on this page, I said, "Huh, nah, all opposed to this."
See you later.
I know, I know.